Here we go. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM, March 22nd, 2023. Welcome to our city council meeting. Will you please rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see everyone here. For the record, we will take roll call, and I'll start with you, Chuck. Councilwoman Owen.
Present.
Thank you.
Present.
Councilwoman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Allen.
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Present.
Welcome, everybody. Looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, seconded by Councilwoman Lavaca. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Motion carries. Onto the consent agenda. Item E. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving right into the heart of the meeting tonight, and that is our presentations. And we're going to begin. Actually, at the top of the agenda, we have Rebecca Skrindi, Chief Executive Officer from Helping Hands Food Bank and Solutions Center. Welcome, welcome, Becky.
Thank you for having us. This is Corinne. She is my engagement manager. And in the back, we have her lovely children. Oh, and here's Miranda, our solutions manager. And also my marketing, there's Amanda in the back, our marketing and communication and executive support manager as well. So thank you for having us. I think we were at the Stuff the Bus, and I was like, it's been a while since we've come and talked about what Helping Hands is doing. And we thought we'd bring our impact report from last year and then talk about some of the things that we're dealing with now and some of the things that we're working on as well. So I know we have a presentation somewhere.
I did not receive that presentation.
Bill, I emailed it to you about three minutes ago.
Okay, I will pull that up. Just give you a minute.
I'm not a very good tap dancer, so. But again, thank you for all that you guys do for us. One of the best parts of my job is that I have the, one of the most supportive cities. I go to other places and talk to other food banks, and they do not have the great support from their city as I do. So thank you. If you didn't know, we are now in six locations. We're in Marble Mount once a week. And at the Inspired Church up there. We're in Hamilton, at the Hamilton Food Bank by the fire department, once a week. We're in Burlington at the Inspired Church. It's kind of like by the park in the library area. We are at Swenomish Reservation out at the Inspired Church out there. And then we're in Anacortes. Those are once-a-week distributions out there as well. We do do our mobile food program. So we're still delivering to homebound seniors, the disabled. We do our backpack program, which isn't really backpacks, but it's a bag of food for over the weekend. We still do that. We're delivering it directly to their homes. And we're supporting a lot of other organizations like Children of the Valley, the Chicken Coop Ministry, some other programs that they're allowed. We give them the food so they can hand that out. And that's been very rewarding to see other people kind of step up, knowing that we're just, we're really working hard on getting people access to food. Well, here it is. So this is the impact report from 2022. So this is what we did last year. So next slide. So who are we accountable to? We are accountable, first and foremost, we're accountable to our participants. Just like you guys, you're accountable for the people that are in your ward. Our donors, our volunteers, our board members, our staff, and the community as a whole. And we take that very seriously. So our purpose is to empower our participants on their pathways from surviving to thriving. And if you notice, it says their pathway. Not the pathway that we're choosing for them. It's their pathway that they're choosing for themselves. To promote community resilience through innovation and intentional partnerships. In my research of this word resiliency that has popped up through COVID, our research is that really it's about connecting systems that already exist. Because when you're talking to a fire department, my, the fire chief that's in our district, not you, of course, because you've been in our building, but District Eight, he had never even been in our building. And when he walked in, it was like, I didn't even know that this was what was in the building. So having just that information and really connecting and connecting the dots of what services exist, that's when we talk about that resilient piece. I'm not going to go through all of these, but we really do believe in accessibility for all, no barriers. Everybody is a whole and complete person. Community helps community. People decide their own paths. No one should be hungry. We believe in the best of people. Volunteers are the heart of Helping Hands. Anyone can make an impact. We are stronger together. Kindness, respect, and no judgment, and all people want to thrive. And in all things, you guys, I'm going to send this to you guys so you can see it and walk through it if you want even more. So by the numbers, we had over 86,000 volunteer hours. If you do the math, they, they value that at about $16.48 an hour. It's a couple million dollars worth of, we would have had to have staff for a couple million dollars over the volunteers. They are really the heart and soul of what we do. And I know we have a volunteer here. You, you used to volunteer.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Once a volunteer, always a volunteer. We had 197,000 visits. So we're not counting people. We're counting every time we have a visitor, a participant, that is one visit over 2022. We handed out 25,000 chow bags. That equals about seven meals, and it's to cover for over the weekend. We had, we handed out 2.3 million pounds of food and 150,000 pounds of the non-food. That's like your soaps and laundry soap and hygiene products. And that one's just getting going. That was the first year we did it for the full year. I know we're going to blow that out of the water for this year. And we had 6,800 mobile food deliveries. So we went to 6,800 homes last year. And all, almost all of that is delivered by volunteers. So you could kind of see in participant cities, obviously Sejro Wully is the largest. Sometimes I think people just tell us it's Sejro Wully because they think they have to be from Sejro Wully to come. But you can see that we have large numbers from all around the county and then some outside the county. We don't turn people away if they come from Waukesha County or Snohomish County. We have zero residential requirements. Age groups, you can kind of see where our largest groups are, that 19 to 54, but 50% of our clients are either seniors or children. So when you ask that question, you know, when I get asked by a donor, you know, why don't people just get a job? Well, 50% of our population that we serve are seniors and children that people are not going to hire.
Question, though?
Yeah.
So the few times that I've actually been there, had the honor to volunteer, several of the people do work. It's just they're not able to make ends meet, so I.
That is, the true story for real is that we did a survey with, because Susan Delbene came up and said that in Congress, they were talking a lot about, well, if people just would go back to work, you know, people just don't want to work right now. And this is as we were coming out of COVID. So I said, can I take a survey and give you the real story of what's happening? And she's like, of course. So we surveyed 100 families. 80% of them were working two jobs. The other 20% were disabled seniors or they couldn't work because of daycare. And we were like, we, so we got to share that information with her and say, maybe transition that conversation to a different conversation. It's not that people are choosing not to work. It's just other things are getting in the way as well. So.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, we see our, we call it the working, the working poor. I hate using that word, but they're doing all the things right. They don't qualify for any government subsidies, so they have to come to us. We're a charity, and they have, because they need that extra help. So when you look at our funding for last year, 75, 72% came from individuals and businesses. 18% came from grants, and 6% came from the government. And then there was a 4% that came in, like, equipment. We bought a van and things like that. Actually, 6% is super high. Normally, the government funding is around 2%. So when you talk about raising $1.8 million and only 2%, or only 6% of that is the government, you could quickly do the math and know how grateful we are of this community and how supported we are in this, in this community. I'm going to talk about the Long Term Recovery Coalition. This is something that we are spearheading. This group was formed after the flood in Hamilton, where we have a food bank. And these, this is really supporting those folks that are coming out of the flood okay at the time. And two years later, we're now starting to see things that, like moldy stuff and things that, like, they weren't able to get insurance stuff covered, and FEMA didn't cover farms. So there's one of the families is a farmer, and they don't get any help through FEMA. And so we're trying to work with these families to really help them recover from the flooding. And other counties do this program. And so we decided that it would support Skagit if we were part of this coalition. So this one's really exciting, and this one has its own full presentation. So we'll make sure we get that on the, on the list in a couple months for you guys to hear about that whole organization because it's really kind of exciting.
Is this the group that I actually had received a call, and I referred them to you? Is that the same group?
Yep.
It is?
Yep.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
So Corinne is going to talk about some of our partners.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. I get the honor of being out in our community and sharing Helping Hands with the people in Skagit County, outside of Skagit County, and getting to talk with donors, share stories about the impact that we're making. But part of the reason that we're able to make such an impact is because of the community partners we have. And we like to refer to them as powerful partnerships because together we really are stronger, and we can create a really powerful community, what Becky alluded to. So you'll see Sylfab Solar, the Port of Skagit. They came in and did their own, own food drives for us. We recently partnered with an elementary school in Mount Vernon, and they do a coin drive every year. And their goal was like $360 was the most that they had ever done. And I said, what if we did a community match? What if we showed these kids, let's bring this to the community, the hard work they've done, and ask the community to match it? Well, they ended up raising more coins, and the total came up to almost $968, I think. And so they are donating that money to Helping Hands and then coming to the food bank to come and see the process. They're going to help build chow bags. They're going to come and learn what volunteerism is. And so really raising, you know, our community members from the ground up and starting them early to realize that, you know, you can give back in, in big and in small ways. And so that was really exciting. We got to their classroom, and they asked us all the questions that they had about the food bank. And they're really curious, and it's really fun to see the younger generation of our community just really digging into stuff like this. So we also partner with Rotary and, oops, sorry, go back. And another powerful partner is Skagit Transit. They support our Stuff the Bus every year and are really, Cheryl's amazing. She spends a lot of her time going out and cultivating, you know, getting people to show up and spreading the word. And so it's always fun to work with other agencies to, to really make an impact. And then most recently, we work with United Way. You probably know the diaper bank in Skagit County. United Way is still, still doing that, and they're still in control of it. But they came in and, and asked for us to help facilitate. So we're really good at, at what we do, the logistics of, of handing things out and, and that, how we're spread across the county. So it was a really strong partnership for us to come together and go, you guys do the cultivation, the marketing, all of that, and then we'll do the, the logistics and the background stuff where we can, because we're already doing it with food. So I have been with Helping Hands for a year as of the beginning of this month. And I know you guys welcomed me at sort of the beginning of my Helping Hands journey. And it's really been amazing to see how much the community cares. I know Becky mentioned it, but when you're out there and you're talking to people, and the first question they ask you is like, how are things going? What do you guys need? And to be able to share that and to, to have that curiosity and that care come towards us is really, really beautiful. So if you guys haven't been, I would encourage you to come and please tour. I would love to show you guys around. You can kind of see the magic of the food bank because it really is a magical place. Things happen in there. Like, I, we joke with Becky that stop putting stuff out into the universe because it happens in that building, so. And we have a lot more exciting partnerships on, on the way. So the other side of other than powerful partnerships is donor partnerships and really talking with people and businesses and individuals in our county that want to support our mission. And they may not be able to give time, but they can give monetarily. And it's a really beautiful thing to, to help guide them through that. So, next slide. I'm also going to talk about solutions, though I feel like Miranda should probably, probably do that. But Miranda is our solutions manager, and we are so blessed to have her. This woman is a wealth of knowledge and resources for our community. And there has never been a person that she hasn't met that she doesn't want to help. Her heart is giant, and the team that she spearheads is incredible. They help with our non-food life essentials that Becky mentioned, so like the personal hygiene, feminine hygiene, soaps, laundry, detergent, and other things. They also go beyond that. You'll see a picture of one of our participants who didn't have a license. And if you don't, if you've never had ID, you can't really do a lot without having identification. And so she, we went down and were able to get her, her ID so that she could continue that path forward and start that journey of thriving. And she's super stoked about it. And then we also, on the solution side, a big part of what Miranda and her team and the rest of us do is advocacy. So we got the opportunity to go down to Olympia this February, talk to our, our legislatures, and really just impress upon them the need for food support. We're in a pretty dire state. It's been a rough go, and probably we're in a, a lower place than we have been in a while. And so just really impressing upon them that we do need help and that food insecurity is a real thing. And so being able to share the stories of participants that live it in the daily was, was really impactful. And we got a really great response, which is even better. So I love it when people are open to that. Next slide. Job skills training. This is in partnership right now with WorkSource. So WorkSource has a grant. And what we do is we do job skills training for interns. So WorkSource will, has a grant that we, that pays for them or pays us back to pay our interns. And we teach them skills like customer service skills, so being out on the floor and distribution, and how to interact with people, teaching them forklift or warehouse skills or data entry. We have an intern right now that is working with Amanda to learn website design and graphics. So just really helping them sort of explore what they want to do. You know, his goal is to start his own business. And so in order to do that, he goes, I need to know how to build a website. I need to know how to market. And so what better place to learn than with Amanda, who's doing it on the day for Helping Hands? So it's been a really exciting partnership. That will end with WorkSource in June. So as we move on to the next slide of our volunteers, they become extremely important because, as Becky mentioned, that's millions of dollars that is either going to have to be filled by volunteers or staff members in order to maintain what we're doing. So the volunteers are really the heart of what we do. Helping Hands started volunteer-based and has continued to have just amazing. I worked in hospice for five years, and I thought the hospice volunteers were fantastic, and they are. But the people that volunteer at Helping Hands are just at another level. It's absolutely amazing how big their hearts are. So this is Flo. She is our oldest volunteer. She just turned 95 this year. And she, she's incredible. She will sit on a stool, and she will wipe individual blueberries off to make sure that they are pristine for our participants. You know, we live by the, if it wouldn't go on my plate, it's not going to go on their plate. And Flo helps us ensure that, that we have top-notch produce coming out of there. And at 95, she still gets out. And her advice was just keep moving. So never stop moving. And then this is Mert. He comes in and volunteers at least once a week, and he is lovely. He's super passionate about helping on the distribution floor. And they have such camaraderie, which I think is a really beautiful thing. They're like a small family back there, and they're always welcoming and/or haggling us. We have a really good, good relationship with them. But in the future, if you know people that want to volunteer, we don't have strict rules or restrictions. It's really just about if you can give time, we will accept what time you can give, and we'll work around what works for you. So there's a lot of opportunity, as Becky mentioned, across the six locations that we have. So if you know anybody or you have kids, you know, teenage kids that need to get in varsity and volunteerism hours or you, you just want them to get good wholesome volunteerism underneath their belt, we will happily accept them. So, next slide. Perfect. And then I will let Becky regale you on our future. Thank you.
So what we're deciding, what we've decided as a team, that the three big pieces that we're working on is access, quality, and quantity. So as we look at, we, we look at it at two pieces. Not only the daily emergency foods, because people are needing food every day. And then the flip side is an emergency for if there was a flood or there was an actual emergency and we were all affected. And so we're looking at, the county has come to us and said, it's, doesn't seem fair that all the emergency food sits here in Sejro Wully. So there isn't warehouses full of food anywhere outside of Sejro Wully that are not owned by a manufacturer or a private company. And so we're looking at ways to work with fire departments and churches and other places to put food in other parts of town. Like, so in La Conner over on the Swenomish side, we're working, across the street is the fire department, and working with them to have some emergency food out there. And they're going to put together a solutions pantry, so for hygiene when they go out on calls and there's maybe a situation where some diapers are needed or something like that is needed, they have some access to that right then and there. So we're working on building those relationships. We have started talking to the sheriff's department because East County, there's not a lot of services, East County. And we have a story, as soon as we started working with the sheriff's department, they called us on, it's not a criminal situation, but there's, there were some families that are in places with no water, no electricity, and they just need help. And so there, they might be that first responder to some places that you didn't even know people were living in. And I'm hoping that they can call our care team, our solution team, to go out there and really care for those folks and get them connected with services. One of them was 82 years old. So when you're looking at the, we're trying to find that true story of the people in need here in, in Skagit County. And we really need to meet them where they're at and give them access to the things that they qualify for. We are helping a veteran. It's taken him five years to get his DD Form 214, which is, it's the Bible when it comes to a veteran. And luckily, I knew how to do that, and within two days, he had it. And it cost me 100 bucks, but it was worth 100 bucks to get him his services now that he, he's, he should have been having for five years. So these are kind of the things that we're trying to work really hard to for futures. Continue to do the food, get food to where we can, where people have better access, focus on quality and quantity. Quality first, quantity second. And then really start working on the why. Why do they need to come to the food bank? I've said it for five years now. Our goal is to someday hand the keys to you guys and say, it's no longer needed as a food bank, use it as a community center. And we have to answer the whys, why people need the food bank. And there's literally a million whys. So our future is really focused on finding that solution. And it's not always the government to step in and fix it. It's just companionship, it's connections, it's getting to know people and understanding where they're at. One of the projects that the Janikys have us working on is they've paid for a three-year staff person. We call her our SOS. Her name's Lisa. Her, she's our street outreach specialist. And we've gone to the businesses in town, and if they find someone sleeping on a bench or that looks like they need help to call, instead of calling 911 if it's a not emergency situation, but calling Lisa. And it just so happened that there was someone right in front of their door when he walked in at 8:30. Within two or three minutes, Lisa was there with a cup of coffee. She just happened to be like just down the street. And she shows up, and the lady, we took her back to the food bank, got her a shower, did some laundry, got her some food, got her some hygiene products. She's not from Washington, she's from Texas. And trying to figure out, she's, she's a gypsy wandering. That's what she wants to do. But trying to find a better, a better pathway for her. And she's been up at the cold weather shelter up in concrete, getting just some respite time. And then we want to work with her of what her next steps are. So that took all of five minutes. Instead of having to call the cops to see who this person was and then maybe trespassing her, and then maybe eventually putting her in her jail for no reason, her first introduction to Sejro Wully was a cup of coffee and someone saying, how can I help you? And I think that is, and she left Mount Vernon because it was, they were harsh on it. Like, they were constantly telling her to leave, and you don't belong here. And, and so I'm really, I'm really happy that the Janikys are supporting this position, that they really want to get to know the people in Sejro Wully that need the help. And they've opened it up, East, East County as well. So that, those reports will be going to the mayor, and you are free to share them with the council of how that's going. And I'm really excited because we saw it day one, so. Any questions? Let's just go to questions. Do you guys have any questions or comments, or?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes. Thank you so much for doing that. It's been very impactful for the community for a long time.
Thank you.
And it's something that is a staple of the community, actually, Helping Hands. And so I really appreciate that. You were talking about like job training programs and the why. And I really appreciate that because I think that's the most important in this situation. And I was just wondering, what are the plans with the why? Do you have any right now with like job training that goes a little bit more above what you guys are doing? Or is that something that's more of a future plan?
Right now, we're trying to continue it. The grant was a $2 million grant, and it does end. And just like any grant, I don't want to live on that because it should be part of our everyday investment in the community. And so I think that as we look at the impact that we've made, like, we have had some, you know, one is working at the district court. One, there's some that went to, back to the unions that, I mean, where they're going beyond where they are now is the story that we can share with our donors and say, we need to continue this type of work. There is a lot of funding for job training. Goodwill has 12 positions that they get to be. Goodwill has 12 positions that they get to be paid for, but they need to place them somewhere, and we're like, oh, we'll, we'll take it. So we are looking at every angle to figure out how to bring that person in, because a lot of our, I do a lot of talking to people that own businesses and say, what do you need, what do you want? It's that I come into work on time, I have a good attitude, and it's kind of hard to have a bad attitude when you're working with people that are, you're serving, you're serving the community, and so it's always in the back of my mind, grow that program as much as we possibly can.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last time we spoke, was it Stuff the Bus? I was just curious, how did it go? How much did you get from that event? Do you remember?
Yeah, it's 215,000 pounds. 215,000 pounds of food, equivalent.
Cash and food, I guess.
Fantastic.
So that's about two months' worth of food that we raised.
Very good haul for one after, one afternoon, morning?
Yeah, I think it's the Dick's Truck that brought everybody, and they are coming next February already, they're on the books, so that's great.
Awesome.
Thank you for coming.
Councilman Allen?
Matt, do you have any large corporations that donate large amounts of food to you, like Kraft or any of those?
Nope. So where we get our food, that's a big, I mean, Costco's a big entity, but, so the grocery stores, we get a percentage of our food from the back store of the grocery stores. We get it from the government, which is the commodities, if the old cheese, I mean, if you've ever had the old government cheese, it's different now. We have a little tiny bit that comes from Northwest Harvest, which is a big food down in Seattle, and then we order free food from Food Lifeline, which is, right now, it's cookies and chips, which is not our ideal item, and they are reporting down 80% over last year, down, so they only have 20% of the food that they used to have. So that's, when she talks about our struggle that we're having, is we don't have those big corporate, I've never bought a semi-load from Arkansas of food, ever, in the eight years, this is my eighth year, starting in April, and I've never had to do that, I've always been able to locally source food, and it was unfortunate that I had to do that, but I had to bring in food out of county or out of state because there's just, there are no big warehouses full of food. Everybody is just on that lean, manufacturing, the grocery stores need it, and it's hard to find food right now. And it's not just Helping Hands, it's across the board. When I go to all the WSDA, other food banks, they're like, we're in the same place of empty shelves, and we have about a week or two left in the warehouse, which is the lowest I've ever seen it, and just working on how to get it back in here. But I wish we had all that, but Draper does a little bit, Trident does a little bit, but you wish you could just have semis, just semis of trucks coming in, it would be awesome. That would be my dream.
Councilwoman McCaffrey?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had one question on the SOS program. Who all is the number being distributed to? Like if we see someone in the community and rather than call the police, is that going to be publicized, or is it just a small subset of people that?
Well, we started with the businesses because we kind of want to, you know, give them some support, because we wanted to make, and we talked with them as we were handing out the flyers, like, this is for you, for you to say, this person might need some help. The goal is to get it out to the community, she is one person, but it is to kind of introduce her slowly to the community. I know we've talked about it at Rotary, and hopefully talk about it tonight if anybody's listening, but the idea is just to kind of slowly roll that out. But if you have somebody that comes to you and says, hey, in our ward, we have someone who looks like they're sleeping in a tent, or, and it doesn't look violent or anything, please, we'll leave our information for. Do you have her card, Miranda? Okay. We'll just email it out to you guys, and you guys can use that for sure, and then give it to anybody who needs it. If everybody had it, that would be fine.
I have just a couple of questions. The first, you were talking about that you're reaching out to different areas, trying to stock up places where if there were emergencies, people could go. So is Inspire Church a part of that? I hear you mention them several times, and they are throughout the county.
Yeah, their land is where we're going to put a lot of the containers, and, but they're not spread out, like Alger Community Hall, we're working with them, obviously we have Hamilton, but there is some strategic places, it's mostly around fire stations that have a little land around them where we can put them and then have them spaced. So that's kind of what we're thinking, just because that would be a natural place. If there was a disaster and you could only go in your neighborhood to get information or whatever, you may walk down to your fire station.
So strategic.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, what is, what is your greatest need right now? I hear you say food, but would it be donations? Would it be the personal hygiene stuff? What is it that is your greatest need right now?
Protein.
Protein, okay.
Yeah, protein, so money, so we can buy protein, and then just the, sharing their stories and getting them out, and making sure that, we've testified down in Olympia a couple of times, and we're going to continue to testify and sharing stories from Skagit County about what hunger really looks like. The state of Washington stopped 90, $93 million was stopped in March for every month for food stamps, so they, we lost it basically, $93 million. And when you think about it, you're, it's coming from seniors, it's coming from people who, before they were getting $6 of food stamps, then during COVID, $200, and now they're back to $6. And these were people who, nobody else is going to help them, and they're seniors, and it's not the people that can go to work and get paid, and so the, this is our clientele. So when the folks, they're, the food bank is going to get super busy here, and we have seen those numbers climbing because of this, this drop in some services. So I support, definitely want people to be at work and working hard, but when it's a senior that's not choosing not to eat because they lost their food stamps, that, that's where I struggle a little bit. So I'm glad that we're there to help them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, we are glad that you're there to help them.
I don't know how you guys, if you understand how it is to live in a city that actually is super supportive, that I don't have to sit in front of you and be questioned that we shouldn't be there, which is, which happens sometimes. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart that you care about us, and you think about us, and you really support us, so thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you to your amazing team.
I know, right?
Yeah, we really are. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And a second presentation. So coming up is co-founder of Solarize Skagit, Mary Woolub.
So hi, I'm excited to be here, and I'm Mary, I'm not necessarily the co-founder, I'm one of five board members.
Five, six?
Six board members. Mary Lee Chamberlain here is also on the board, and we're excited to talk to you about a wonderful opportunity to bring solar to Skagit County. And this is new for us up in Skagit County, but it's been something that's been going on around the country, where able to bring solar at a discounted rate to homeowners mostly. So I'm going to start talking about, first about who Skagit Valley Clean Energy Cooperative is, which I'm on the board. Go ahead, Bill, next. So we are a not-for-profit organization that was incorporated in May of 2022, so we're coming up on our first year, so we're newbies. Our mission is to bring, promote and produce local, regional renewable energy to, and to promote sustainable and self-reliant local communities. Anyway, and why a co-op? We chose to use a co-op so that it was member-driven and an opportunity for the members to control the direction of our organization as opposed to a prop-for-profit organization. And cooperatives are self-help organizations, so we felt like those values fit with the values of our board, and so that's why we chose that model. What we do is we started with a Solarize campaign for 2023, we'll be talking about that today, and we support grants for public buildings. So we just completed some middle to Department of Commerce on two grants, one for the, both buildings are emergency shelters, and they're solar plus storage, and that's one for the La Conner Schools, and one for the La Conner Fire Hall. And so those were due tomorrow, we got them in early.
Yay.
We also support clean energy legislation and educate the public about clean energy.
Next.
So in the future, where we'd like to go is we'd like to be doing some community solar projects, some bigger projects where more people can take advantage of clean energy, explore energy storage options, get involved with electric vehicles and charging stations, and microgrids, and that's a kind of off-grid, smaller place where energy is stored. Next. So our partners, we're really lucky to have been hooked up with Olympia Community Solar. They've been doing the Skagit, the Solarize campaign for the last two years, and frankly, as you can probably see, they're about 30 years younger than we are. And it's fun to be mentored by these great people who, submission, and they're also a nonprofit, is to have an equitable and accessible transition to clean energy. And they've just been really helping us holding our hands through this process, and we couldn't have this happen without them, so we're really lucky. So Solarize campaigns have not, they have been around for a while. 2009, it started in Portland, and it's been very popular on both coasts, both east coast and west coast, and then more locally, there's been a successful campaign, Queen Anne in 2012, 2014 Mercer Island, and 2016 Watkin County. So we're finally bringing it here to Skagit, and we're really excited about that. Next. So what we'll cover is about what is the Solarize campaign, the timeline and enrollment for this, benefits of participating in the campaign, how net metering works, and how cities can support, and other organizations can support us. So what is Solarize? It's essentially a group purchase. We've negotiated a contract with, we pre-vetted and located installers and negotiated a reduced price for solar, so we bring it to citizens who participate in the campaign at a much less price. It's a one-stop shopping, in other words, they just sign up, and we take, hold their ham all the way through it, so that's, the homeowner does not have to go out and try to find their own installers, and you know how that works, you have to talk to three or four or five, and figure out, you know, if they are qualified, if they're, you know, what they're, you know, if they've got complaints, whatever. We've done all that ahead of time for them. So it's, again, it's a one-stop shopping. Next. So both Skagit Valley Clean Energy Cooperative and Olympia Community Solar roles, so our role is to negotiate the special pricing and with the contractors, and then also secure partnerships with municipalities and other organizations. So we're talking with City of Cedar Woolley, we talked to La Conner, we're, tonight, two other bimmers are at the council meeting with Mount Vernon, we meet with Anna Cordis, and then other organizations for Skagit County and so on. So what we want to do is get the power of like-minded organizations to come and speak the word and talk about clean energy and the Solarize campaign. We've brought educational materials and answered questions, and we host the enrollment process, which we're, I'm going to talk about here in a minute, communicate with our partners, and then at the end, at the end of the campaign, we'll do an evaluation process, see how it went, and see what we're going to do to improve the next time. Next. So we're already underway. We started in February, we secured the group purchasing contracts, we have three firms, I think there were eight that applied, and three were, scored the highest, Truly Electric, Blossom, and Fire Mountain from Big Lake were the three that were selected. The campaign's underway, I think we have over 60 people that have already signed up, and we're just really getting the word out now, so, you know, to see what's going to happen when it really hits the ground. And between now and July 4th, we're taking, signing people up for the program, and then, and then from now until the end of the year, there'll be installations. So it's a time-limited offer, basically, for people, because we want people to make a decision. We want them to say, okay, I'm going to get solar, I'm not going to get solar, I'm participating in this campaign. So at the end of the year, we'll stop and then we'll redo it for the next 2024. Okay, what are the benefits of Solarize? Go ahead. Next. I kind of spoke to this, but in a nutshell, it's simple, it's affordable, and people get to do something for their community. Next. Simplicity, all they do is sign up on one of the online webpages, either Skagit Clean Energy Co-op or Olympia Solar, and if you sign up through Skagit, it takes you to Olympia Solar. So this is where Olympia Solar has been really great about handling that end of it. And then the homeowner has one of the contractors, installers contact them, they have a site assessment, and then they get a quote. This is all free of charge, they don't have to pay a dime, okay? Then they get a decision point, at that point to say, okay, can they, first of all, are they qualified to get solar, because a lot of homes aren't, and if they are, what's the price? And is it, are they willing to do that? And then, once they say yes, they sign a contract, then they start with installation, and then they start generating savings on their clean energy. Next.
Can I interject something?
Sure.
On the assessment, there's a looksee of the building, the home, and there's a review of how much energy is being consumed, how many solar panels would be necessary to cover that energy use, and so then you get an idea of return of investment on that over time. So a lot of information goes into that site assessment.
Right, right.
So the return of investment, are you talking about what you're saving on your electrical bill, and is it also a situation where you can sell if you have?
Not anymore in Washington, but you do with net metering, you'll learn a little bit about that.
Okay.
You, you bank your, your solar that you don't use, and you get a credit for it during the winter months when you're not getting as much from your panels. It works out really, really well.
Right, okay. Cool. So next, and we're going to do the video, so you click on that one. Is it going?
We can explain it.
Okay, well, Bill, go ahead and go back, we had a video about how net metering works. So Bill, go ahead and return. So you can see is when it's sunny, you get, store your energy, and, and then you use it, you know, like during the day, and at night, you're able to then keep your house going and, and bank that energy, and then it goes to the, to the grid, and so when it's not sunny or in the winter months, then you take your credits back and you use it. So essentially, you're really having your solar system paying for your energy bill. Okay. And Mary Lee has solar on her house, and I don't think-
The whole winter without having to pay anything but the connection fee.
Right, so it's pretty cool. Okay, Bill, next?
Another question on that, may I ask one more question? Because I have solar panels on my house already. So if a person already has solar panels, can they become a part of the co-op if they so choose?
Oh, absolutely, and we love that, absolutely. And, and actually, on a side note, our co-op has a membership fee of $100, which is lifetime. So it's really low, and we're more interested in getting members and having people part of our cooperative. And this is, the Solarize campaign is just one activity that we're involved with.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the other really cool thing is that there's a 30% federal tax credit off the top. So let's say you have a $27,000 solar array on your house, $7,000 is given back to you through a tax credit, so it really costs you $20,000. And then you don't have any Washington State sales tax on top of that. There's, again, limited time group purchase rate, it's $4, or $2.81, which is, I think, per watt, significantly less than if you were to go out and get solar on your own. And lastly, financing, we've been, we have partnered with another bank, but there's several banks that are interested in providing financing for this type of program. Next. And then, this was an example of one of the banks that we've worked with. And then, this was an example of one of the banks that we've worked with. Next. So in a nutshell, there's a rigorous process to vet and select qualified installers. There's a free energy assessment and quotes, and it's pretty detailed, as Mary Lee mentioned. Special group purchasing prices, a 30% tax credit and no Washington sales tax, reduce monthly electric bills, which is a big plus, and contribute to reducing fossil fuels. Next. So what we're asking from you is to partner with us. And what we'd like to see is that have, I think you have utility bills. We have brochures. I think there's some in my bag here.
And-
We're asking to have the brochures stuffed in the utility bill. Also, Bill is willing, have a little note on your webpage, the town's webpage, that talks about the campaign. So when people go to your webpage, they'd see the Solarize campaign in there. And we can work with your IT person and get that set up. We've already got graphics and so on. So, and then lastly, I mentioned donation. I mean, that was just to help out with the nonprofit, but it's not required as part of the campaign. Next, and that's it? Skagit Valley Clean Energy.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I'm really looking to see if you can spread the word about this option to folks who-
Any questions? All right. So this is the second time that I've had opportunity to hear this presentation. It's very exciting. And I think it's great that you're reaching out to the public and encouraging them to not only save money for themselves, but also to really help the environment. And to give a nice vision and future for those who come after us, a cleaner environment for those who come after us.
So we would like, I'm asking for approval for, could we, are you willing to let us work with your staff to get the brochures in the utility bill?
So what I'm going to do is actually take this back to my staff. I asked them to sit in on this and I'm going to take it back to my staff. We have what we call a director's meeting and we will actually discuss what we can and cannot do.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. Moving on to, oh, one last thing I wanted to say before you go, Becky, because I saw this, it came up, Neighbor's Night, April 20th. I didn't know if you wanted to mention that or not.
That's Karen's job, but I'll do it.
Okay. Because I think that's a great opportunity if you can-
It is, thank you.
April 20th, at Tulip Valley Farms, we're doing a Neighbor's Night. It's free to the public. We are going to do baked potatoes donated by Skagit's Best Potatoes and Costco. And it's just going to be fun. We're going to have some partners there that show how we work together. And there's going to be music and raffles, but it's free to the public. So please consider coming out and supporting Helping Hands out there. And we'll send you a link to that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Mary, for coming. Thank you, yeah. Thank you. All right. Moving on to staff reports. So Charlie isn't here, but I'm going to open it up to the staff to see if anybody has anything that they'd like to share with the council.
Well, just a few things on public works side. If you've been out to Memorial Park, you'll see the restaurant, restroom, the playground equipment is going in. They were short a few parts or they would be about done with that. They've graded for the splash pad and we, on tonight's agenda is a ward of the restroom project for that. And I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But that's coming along well. Nathan is still hoping to have that done around the 1st of July. So we're, the other park that we've got in process is the Olmsted Park. We're waiting for the federal environmental clearance. And our consultant, Ross White, has been a little busy with his other client, BNSF, the last week or two. But we heard from him yesterday and it looks like we should be getting some word on that here in the next few weeks. We're hoping to bid that in May. That'll actually be two bids. It'll be for the infrastructure and then there'll be a second one for the restroom that's associated with that project. Same basic layout as the one we're doing at Memorial, but with the architectural elements meant to match the Olmsted Park look up there. So that's, that's happening. The Public Works Building, second floor project's coming along well. They're in the process of sheet rocking right now. All the rough ends in place. And we're also feeling that one's going to be done close to the 1st of June. So that's moving right ahead as well. We're going to plan an open house ribbon cutting for the overall facility once that's done and we'll keep you informed as that gets closer coming up down the road. If you have been out there, the Nelson property, which we purchased, Nathan's crew's been busy out there. They've demolished the old house and shed, cleaned that site up. You can see all the way through there now. And so that's going to be ready for whenever we get the funds to do that part of the project. Actually, that'll be, Bucko Development will be building that roadway coming through there. So that's coming along fine. The other projects we have in progress, the township SR9 intersection project is essentially complete, other than punch list. We've had a contractor that's kind of went dormant on us and we want to get him back out there to finish up sometime in the next month. We'll close that project out. As well as the Faber contract. We issued the last few small change orders on that today to do a little bit of hydro seeding on work that, or ground that was disturbed that wasn't covered in the main contract. That'll all be done, we hope, in the next 30 days and we'll bring that as a final acceptance to you on that. So lots of other things in the works, but that's the main ones I wanted to let you know about.
All right, thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else? I want to give everybody the opportunity if they so choose. All right, thank you. We'll move on to council reports. And Chuck, I will start with you. Do you have a council report this evening?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Councilman McGoffin?
Thank you. No report this evening.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Burns?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight from me either.
All right. Councilman Allen?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
All right. And Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a question because I was part of the business committee and we had some questions about hanging baskets. So I shot an email out to Mark and Nate and of course I CC you and Charlie on those. But the response came back that not to dictate to the staff on what to do. So I just was curious on the ability to ask questions regarding those. That wouldn't be something where I would be asking them to hang baskets or tackle a task like that. I don't think I've ever done that, so maybe it wasn't intended towards me. But it would be something where clarity on, as far as the committee goes, on what to, what to be able to work with the staff on. And so my understanding was that when things are brought up in the committee, ask them, see if there's something that could be brought back before the committee, if they're a good idea or if it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, so I think that's a communication that you and I had. And simply put, asking questions, there's nothing wrong with asking questions. You can ask, you know, whatever you'd like. And we encourage you to go back to the staff and actually ask them questions that you have. It was more about basically kind of dictating them how to do their job. So that's-
On that, I'm just curious on how that worked out because it was, would it be possible to do a baskets or greenhouse towards Brigham Park because they have that already there? Would that be something of a good idea to bring back? It wasn't, I never asked anybody to put up a greenhouse, to put up baskets or to do anything. I don't, I don't think I've ever asked anybody to do anything. It was a question like, is this a good idea to bring back before the council of a Sejro-Woolley nursery? Kind of deal. So it was like, there was the comment to stay within my lane, but I didn't see it as a dictating. And maybe Mark can clarify, he was on that email. Did you feel that I was dictating or requesting anything within that email or informational? And I apologize if it did come out as anything. I have it if you want me to read it.
So why don't we, why don't we do this? We'll take this kind of off the table here. This isn't really-
I wasn't sure if it relates maybe to the rest of the council. Maybe it wasn't totally directed towards me.
It's nothing on our agenda right now. So, and this is actually a chance for you to report. So do you have a report?
Well, it's part of the committee report. So I was asking a question about the committee and that's what I was wondering. But we could take it offline. I just wasn't sure if it was something, maybe the whole council maybe is asking something? I don't think I was, but maybe you wanted to get some information out to them.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like it. But yeah, I would love to. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So, and then moving on, I wanted to, I wanted to report on the town hall meeting that we had two Saturdays ago. We had Senator Wagner here and Representative Eslick and Lowe. It was great. We had probably between 100 and 120 people who attended. So it was actually fantastic. We covered topics regarding the elk, mental health, property rights. And then afterwards, all of them were open to a tour of the Public Works Building. And I want to thank Nathan Salsina for opening that up and giving them the tour and answering questions. And I also want to thank the staff and in particular the Sejro-Woolley Police Department. They actually, my goodness, I don't know how many chairs you hauled in here, but at least 60 or more. So thank you very much for providing the seating. But we had chairs that went all the way from the front all the way to the back wall. So it was really well-attended and appreciate the police being here and overseeing that. Thank you. Also, I wanted to let you know that on Saturday, we have a parade going on here in town. It is the Vietnam Veterans Day Parade. It's going to be from 1:00 to 2:00. And they will be kind of marching and driving through downtown on Metcalf and then have an event at their legion afterwards. So along those lines, what I wanted to do is, I wanted to read a proclamation. And this is, you know, back in April of 2017, I believe it was Donald Trump, President Donald Trump, who signed in the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act. And so I don't know that the city has really acknowledged anything like that. So if the council will bear with me, I agree. I would like to read from the Office of the Mayor and from the City of Sejro-Woolley, an official statement regarding Vietnam Veterans Day 2023. Whereas the veteran war was fought in Vietnam from 1961 to 75. And whereas on March 30th from 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed and withdrew of combat troops from Vietnam. And whereas 1,123 members of the United States Armed Forces from Washington State were killed or declared missing in action, with hundreds more who were wounded. And whereas more than 184, 505 Vietnam-era veterans live in the state of Washington and our nation stands stronger for their service. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely and faithfully were upon the return home, caught in the middle of a public debate about the United States' involvement in the Vietnam War. And whereas one of the most fundamental obligations for us as citizens is to show our respect and dignity to all who have worn the uniform of the United States and to honor their service by serving them as they have served us. Now therefore I, Mayor Julia Johnson, along with the Council of Sejro-Woolley, City Council Sejro-Woolley, and for the City of Sejro-Woolley, do hereby proclaim, we will remember and honor our Vietnam vets on March 29th, 2023, as set forth and signed into law by President Donald Trump in the Vietnam War Veterans Recognition Act of 2017. To all Vietnam veterans, thank you for your service. All right. Thank you for bearing with me on that. And then that's all I have. Moving on to public comments, it's 7:02. Does anybody want to make public comments? If so, please keep it to three minutes and please give us your name and address. Okay. Seeing no one who wants to give public comments, we will move on to new business. We only have one item tonight and that is the Memorial Park Restroom Construction Project Contract. And I believe this is actually from Nathan, but Mark, are you going to take this for Nathan?
I can cover that for Nathan tonight. So we closed bids on the restroom project on March 9th. We received eight bids, seven of which were responsive. The low bid was from Wiser Construction. They're actually the subcontractor for Northwest Playground, who are doing the work on Memorial Park site. So it actually ties in pretty well. We've been pretty happy with the work they've done so far. They were pretty close to our estimate in the budget that I put together for you and we discussed at a previous council meeting. And we're able to fund this without any problems. And we're recommending a ward of this, this contract to Wiser Construction Company in the amount of $111,315. So if you have any questions, they'd be glad to take those.
All right. Are you looking for action tonight, Mark?
I am.
All right. Is there any questions for Mark? Yes, go ahead.
I think I read in it, is it supposed to be completed by June 15th then?
That's, that's what we've put in the specification, Jess.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. If not, they are looking for action tonight. Is there anybody who'd like to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the Memorial Restroom Project Board.
Madam Mayor, I'll second that.
Resolution right here.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, actually, I had a motion by Councilwoman Diamond as a second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca and seconded by Councilwoman Diamond to authorize Mayor Johnson to execute the attached Public Works Agreement, number 2023 PW09, with Wiser Construction Company, Inc., for the construction of the new restroom facility at Memorial Park in the amount of $111,315, which includes sales tax. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. With that, we have completed our business. So the next council meeting is actually a work session. It is going to be April 15th. And I hope you all have a good evening. Thank you. We are adjourned.